June the 12th, 7:30, and we're going to start the meeting here in just a minute. But first of all, we got Mr. Hoff is going to do the invocation to us, and Mr. Johnson is going to do the pledge. So if you can stand, please stand.
Emily Fowler, thank you for our great city. Thank you for the many blessings that we enjoy here. And I thank you for the opportunity of getting together and being in complete freedom to decide the affairs of our city. And I just pray that you'd help us tonight as we deliberate over different issues, that we would do your will and that we would do the best for the people. And we ask this in your name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yep. Schultz.
Here.
Blair.
Here.
Call.
Here.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Lynch.
I'll make a motion to excuse Councilman Lynch.
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
I'll start with Blair.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes. I see, I see approval of the minutes of the special meeting we had on 5:30. Is there any deletion, deletions? Or is there any additions, any comments, any concerns about what is put in there? If not, can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the special meeting at 5:30.
I have a second. Thank you. Roll call.
Blair.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes. Any communications?
None.
Any report? Well, we don't have any council meetings minutes. No, there is no report of the committees. Report of city officials, a city manager?
Earlier today, we went on our fact-finding mission to downtown Belle Fountain. And I think everybody found that to be very informative and very helpful. And that is something that we will continue to work with some of our observations there that will be of benefit to Washington Courthouse here. However, the highlight of tonight is really recognizing Fulton Terry. For a lifetime of devoted service to the citizens of Washington Courthouse, you know, I can't think of any finer citizen that we've ever had, somebody who selflessly gave of himself for the betterment of the people of Washington Courthouse in Fayette County. And we've put together a proclamation. And it's a proclamation of the City of Washington Courthouse, Mr. Fulton Terry. Whereas Mr. Fulton Terry is a valued member of our community with a history of personal commitment to the advancement of the people of Washington Courthouse in Fayette County. And whereas Mr. Fulton Terry is the devoted husband of Bertha Terry, enjoying 70 years of marriage, a union producing five children and 34 grandchildren and great-grandchildren. And whereas Mr. Fulton Terry is a mighty man of God, a member of the First Church of God, serving as deacon, worship leader, and treasurer for more than 30 years, Mr. Terry has led the Wednesday evening worship service at Courthouse Manor for residents unable to attend church. And whereas Mr. Fulton Terry served for 35 years as a paid call firefighter with the Fire Department of the City of Washington Courthouse, and also several years with the Police Department of the City of Washington Courthouse. Further, Mr. Terry contributed to the safety of our community as Director of the Fayette County Emergency Management Agency for more than 23 years. And whereas Mr. Fulton Terry retired from General Motors Company as Senior Safety Officer Engineer after 28 years of service. Mr. Terry, in his lifetime, also worked for the Ohio Department of Transportation and the Fayette County Engineers Office, providing exceptional service to both organizations. And whereas Mr. Fulton Terry is an example of service to our community, Mr. Fulton Terry is a former member of the Kiwanis Club of Washington Courthouse, a former member of the Fayette County Metropolitan Housing Authority, and a former member of the Tri-County Safety Council of Fayette, Clinton, and Highland Counties. And whereas Mr. Fulton Terry is a loved member of our community that we cherish with all the kindness of our heart, Public Safety Hometown Hero Awardee of the American Red Cross and Grand Marshal of the Chamber of Commerce Christmas Parade. And whereas Mr. Fulton Terry furthered his education with Sinclair Community College, extensive training from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, the Ohio Fire Academy, the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, and the Ohio Department of Public Safety. And whereas Mr. Fulton Terry celebrates his 90th birthday in the year of our Lord, 2024, and the people of Washington Courthouse desire to recognize the service of Mr. Fulton Terry to our civic life and express gratitude for his lifetime of service to the families, communities, and civic organizations of Washington Courthouse in Fayette County. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Washington Courthouse, Mr. Dale Lynch Chairperson, Mr. Steve Schultz Vice Chairperson, Mr. Jim Christman, Member of Council, Mr. Ted Hawk, Member of Council, Mr. Caleb Johnson, Member of Council, Mr. Jim Blair, Member of Council, and Mrs. Sylvia Call, Member of Council, and Mr. Joseph Denon, City Manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, do hereby cause this proclamation to be so drafted. We urge the citizens of our community to thank Mr. Fulton Terry for his valued commitment to our lives. And witness whereof hereunto, Mr. Steve Schultz, Vice Chairperson, Mr. Joseph Denon, City Manager, and Mrs. Kelly Ford Clerk has subscribed their names and caused to seal the City of Washington Courthouse to be affixed this 12th day of June in the year of our Lord, 2024. That's the official recognition. Fulton, I can't think of a kinder human being. Someone who genuinely cared about the community, the people in it. And I'm incredibly proud that you were able to come up tonight. Mr. Schultz, I think it's time for a photograph.
Yes, I think it is.
My man. I need where you're going.
Yeah, you did. And he tells everybody that.
Fulton, after reading all that.
Is that even real?
Oh, my gosh.
How are you?
When did you have time to have children? Here you go.
I need my wife here with me.
Just a minute, I'll get you.
Yeah, you're right.
She's the one.
She's the one.
She's the one, Lord have mercy.
You're going to the meeting somewhere.
Hey, there you go, men, don't forget this. Your wife is very important. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
No, you got it?
Yeah, I said if you want.
Yeah, no, no, you put right ahead. Yes, you put.
I would just like to thank all of you. I feel so undeserved. Many of you could have done the same thing. But it's through God and my witness, and through my family and support to this great community of Washington Courthouse, a great Buckeye. Now, my wife's a Marine. I had to trade her for a egg. And though, my wife, she came right in as a good Buckeye, as a Marine, as a Buckeye. And I just thank you all. And the services here, anybody could have done it. But it's through the Lord, His strength. When I was down and out, the Lord always gave me strength. Like I always tell him, I said, look, I knew you before he was born. And I do, and many of you, same way here, I knew you before we were born. But this has been a great community. I was born in July 46, Harrison Street, Washington Courthouse. The street wasn't even paved at the time. It was still gravel. They used to say, hey, probably use a toucher now. Everybody was good. And my grandparents and all, and the community. We lived, I don't know where you all live, but Washington Courthouse. I'm not kidding you. I was born here, grew up in Detroit. And I always said I was coming back home one day. No place, at Washington Courthouse, Fayette County, and a good Buckeye. Go Bucks!
Go Bucks!
And the Fire Department, they've been on the Police Department. Oh, Lord have mercy. It was a time, but that's it. And that's all right, we made it. We made it out of there in a big form. We made out of the Fire Department, Georgia. But thank you, and to my wife, you all, she's the one that deserves this more than me. Because she had to put up with me, and she's still putting up with me. 90 years old. And says, hey, what time is it, baby?
Would you tell him birth the first time he brought you to Washington Courthouse?
I brought her, she didn't go, where I brought her to? And how many years has he been with us?
68.
68 years.
How many children you got here?
That's fantastic.
Now, we're blessed with our family. How many children we got, grand, greats?
Three, four.
Thirty-four.
And most of them are female. You know what I'm talking about, right? You know what I'm talking, yo, girl. You know what I'm talking about in Spanish? Yo, girl, I love you in Spanish. And the ones can't say it, they say amo papa, amo granny. They have to call birthday in the morning, 2 o'clock in the morning one time, and tell them about amo granny. So thank all of you, the Reverend Harold, she's a fantastic lady over there. She always had me look at her. Look at her, that's all right, you don't have to cry. But yes, all of you, and the City of Washington Courthouse, Fayette County. You've been a blessing. I plowed snow, I've sowed it, I've cut weeds. All right, I'll tell you what, I've done it all. But this is a great life. And again, all of you, thank you. City Council, it could not make without you guys. Look at this guy here. This guy here likes our place restaurant too. He went back to the gym a whole time ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, brother. You still hanging there, how old are you, you say you were, 91? 92?
Someplace in there. Sometime I feel like it's 110.
And thank all of you, City Manag-
Thank you.
City Council, you got a good manager. And I mean that. Because I'm not just saying that because he's here. I was saying, I was saying there was downstairs. And I knew, again, like I said, I knew him before he was born. I knew his parents, and he had came up on a good parent, good dealership. So thank you, and John, you too have got a high. I see you with your walking up back and forth to the restaurant. I'm watching this town going your business. But thank you over and over again, and give glory and honor to the Lord and to the family and to all of you all. Thank you, and you, girl. To Kida, she talked about moving away today. I prayed against that. And I'm like going to church, I said, I'm still praying against you moving away, man. You still need it here. And the Fire, and Chief to Chief, hey, please, you guys leave. You're going, I should have got a van, don't worry. But I'm still looking. I'm over our community area there, I'm watching over it all the time. I mean it. Safety and welfare, I bless you. I'm watching you at our place, sir. My place.
My place, and your place is.
Watch you guys, buddy. You're welcome. Very good story.
You can put the law on the rest of all.
Yeah, you're a winner, wasn't it, guy? All right, thank you. All right, I didn't mean to interrupt you all. Y'all were at the meeting now.
Well, Fulton, you are more than welcome to stay. But you are also more than welcome, if you want to go home and spend the nice evening at home, you are more than welcome to depart.
You go to our place?
Go to our place. Better hurry up, they pull closer a little bit.
I got our place at home.
There you go, that's right, yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and you can have a good one.
Thank you very well.
My parents, if you're going to visit our church sometime, our pastor Michael Mike, he loves flying. I tried to put the word here, bro.
I was going to say, he's loud sometimes. I told him that. I told his pastor one time, I said, you get him a seat, let me take him.
Have you ever heard him preach?
His pastor, Harrison Street Church. He's in clumsy. All right, let's see what we got here now. Director, well, I get, I have to get back together here. Director Finance, you have any words for us tonight?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. City Attorney.
I have no report.
You mowing grass?
Don't mow the grass.
Local citizens, let's see, I had a paper here, someone to do with it. Where'd it go to? We lost our, we lost our.
Ted probably took it.
Yeah, probably. Oh, here it is, I got it. It was underneath some other paper. Sean Remington, would you step up and give us your name and your address? And let us know what your topic is.
Sean Remington, 3857 US Route 62. I am here to address counsel, thanks for having me, and talk about the bike track trail. And I just want to comment, I hope you're, Kelly, I hope you're recording for Fulton.
Definitely.
Always. My daughters took gymnastics with his granddaughter, so I actually got to have quite a few conversations with him. And I always like to find older people to have, like, their world experiences and
He has.
He's hilarious. Like, he would crack me, I mean, he would just have me laughing every meeting or every practice. So, but, yeah, here once again, I think we are at a, so I'm here to talk about the trail. Very excited, very positive. After four years, this journey started for me. We got the trail in there. Still a little signage and paintage needs done, you know, just for clearing marking of things. Some confusion, people think that the bridge goes under there. And I was like, well, it's pretty obvious it goes to the left. But, but yeah, once that's done, and, yeah, I just want to recap. Like I said, this is, it's really wild how life lead you this way. Again, this started for me four years ago, riding bikes with my daughter from the park, trying to get to the trail system. She almost got hit by a car. I started asking people, why isn't this trail connected? Everyone's like, it's the railroad. Me being an ideas guy, drew the map and said, well, there's a way around that. Bruce Willis, who's on the Triangle Trail Group, liked the idea, set up meetings with the Fayette Parks Department. Spent about a year lobbying the Parks Department and realized that, started making, identifying some things in governments where we get breakdowns. When you're dealing with the trails, you're dealing with so many different organizations and so many groups, things get lost in translation pretty quickly. And things will be discussed or said, yeah, we're going to work on that, we're going to get back with you. And it just never seemed to go anywhere. And then, so after about a year, it takes us in 2001. Said I had some maps showing some people, and people were getting more and more interested. And next thing I know, we're running a group of people, writing candidates for 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 Change for City Council. And I was the campaign manager because I own a building in the city. I pay taxes. All my employees are residents of the City of Washington Courthouse, but I cannot run for city council. So, you know, I was the behind them and helping and, you know, it was a grassroots. We used to tell Schultz that it was no angle, it was just, it was a grassroots. And by the time we decided to do that, it was literally the day to be on the ballot. So we had to do it as writing candidates. And it was a great, great experience, I think, really taught people about local governance. And then, yeah, and then a couple segues in between there. We had to pull off the trail to Chillicothe, almost shut down. It was in danger of closing. And so we had to spend time trying, with their Parks Department and working on, we stopped that from getting closed, it was fantastic. In between that time, we're going into, after the election, 2022. And we started doing stuff like painting murals in the downtown. They're not permanent, Caleb, they're, but I figured, hey, if we have faded plywood, we got a lot of empty buildings, let's just put art on it. So from that whole block there in front of the courthouse, you know, just temporary, just looks a little better. So moving on, and then I think August will be two years that I have not missed one city council meeting, a regular session, and just to keep it going, keep it going. And during that time, before the For For Change group, what I really saw was the division in this country between the extremes and cable news. And no, everyone has strong opinions, but there's really no measurement. So I thought of a think tank, Fayette Citizens League, and a way to agree to disagree and just talk about return on investment of your local tax dollars. And so as we talked about that, and, you know, had meetings and done other stuff in the community, helped broker with the Patterson property that she did not want to sell to the city, but we helped to get that done, to connect the trail. But what this has led me to is this November, after people asking me, why aren't you running for something? I will be on this November's ballot for County Commissioner. I will be the first independent on the ballot. I think in this community, people are like, well, I don't know, but I think at this time in history, as an independent, I have the best shot. If people don't know, out of 12,000 registered voters, we have about 900, about 1,000 Democrats, 4,000 Republicans, 12,000 unaffiliated voters. So as, for me, representative as an unaffiliated voter, because Ohio doesn't have, I won't be listed as an independent, because Ohio has an independent party, so they don't say unaffiliated. That's how we are. We just, the majority of us are in the middle, and we don't get hurt because the news and the extremes get the attention. So it's about bringing the community together, getting things done. And, yeah, very excited to keep that going. And just wanted to say, all this started from a little bike trail. So thank you for everyone's time, and I'll talk to you later.
Thank you very much. Marilyn O'Flynn. State your name and your address, please, Marilyn.
My name's Marilyn O'Flynn. I live at 607 Carolyn Road, which is the corner of Carolyn and Willard across from the school track field. And I want to thank you for allowing me to speak. On Memorial Day weekend, I looked, I walked out my garage door and looked up, and I have fireworks over my head, exploding over my property, over my head, very distraught over it. I went in and I looked up the Ohio Revised Firework Laws to know what I'm talking about, to have a little idea of what was going on. So I carried my concern the following Monday to police, or the following Tuesday to Police Chief. And also, in talking to him, I talked to the Washington Fire Department. My intentions were to talk to the chief, he was not available. So I did talk to Assistant Chief Langley. And after our discussion, he did suggest that I make my concern known to City Council. So here I am. What I'm doing here tonight is just to make a plea that you all make our own community ordinance for fireworks. Where I live, our houses are very close. I do have pictures here of a little bit what I was talking about, not the fireworks themselves, but the apparatus that was there and the distance from the street on both sides, Carolyn and Willard, to where it was. They have since moved that apparatus. So I don't know if they plan on putting it back up and firing them on the Fourth of July. But they were loud, they were up high in the sky. It reminded me of what the Fire Department puts off on the Fourth of July. That's how big they were. When I was at, I worked part-time at Walgreens. And when I was there, I could see the fireworks exploding over all the buildings. So anyhow, I just, I want to urge our City Council to please work with, and I know you will, the Fire Department, the Police Department, whoever, and make a local ordinance for us to be able to know, hey, this is legal, this is not legal. When I talked to Assistant Chief Langley, he stated that he did come out to my home, measured the properties, measured where they were going off. He did give me an update that this was being worked on. And he also said that it was less than 150 feet, and that is illegal by state law. But I really feel we need ordinance for our community. And when I also looked up, there are a lot of communities, like up around Columbus, where they have banned fireworks in the neighborhoods. So I'm just making a plea that you all don't delay it, make it a priority for our community not to wait until something happens. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marilyn. Okay, with that, then that brings us to, we have some legislation here we'd like to go over, so ordinance number 282024, second reading.
I'll move that we place ordinance number 282024 on second reading.
Second. Any comments or concerns? Any discussion on this one? If not, can I roll call?
Blair.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Ordinance number 28 dash 2024, an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Washington Courthouse, Fayette County, Ohio.
Resolution R 212024, second reading.
I'll move that we place resolution number R 212024 on second reading.
Second. Any, any discussion on this one? Roll call, please.
Blair.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Resolution number R 21 dash 2024, a resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into a partnership agreement with Fayette County Commissioners for the administration of the PY 2024 Community Housing Impact and Preservation CHIP Grant Program if funded.
Move for adoption.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Blair.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes. New resolution in the writing, but Resolution R 222024, first reading.
Move that we place Resolution R 2224 on second.
Second. Any discussion or any concerns about this one? Can I get a roll call, please?
Blair.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Resolution number R 22 dash 2024, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, City Manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, appointment of Mrs. Mandy Miller to the Historic District Review Board of the City of Washington Courthouse for a term concluding December 31st, 2025.
We went through that pretty fast. That puts us in the miscellaneous. Mr. Johnson, you have any words for us tonight?
Well, we talked a lot about fireworks. And just so you know, we talked about it in the committee. I want to make sure you know that, because I know you came to the regular meeting. You didn't really hear us get to talk about it. But we really did talk a lot with the Fire Chief and the Police Chief. and the police chief, both. The honest answer is, and I don't speak for everyone else here, for me, so you know, I'm very hesitant to ban something. I understand that fireworks can be very dangerous. I understand that especially for smaller properties, who are very packed next to other people, that's not a very considerate thing to do. With that said, if anything were to happen, or if there's a fire code that isn't being followed, and your neighbor is being reckless and setting those things off, there are civil remedies that people can pursue to make sure that, you know, the laws are being followed. But it doesn't necessarily imply you have to be a criminal law. I don't want to make people criminals for setting off a firework. Civil, yes, absolutely, those mechanisms are in place. We talked a lot about education, though, especially over the next year. It is, I think, in my opinion, vital, that whenever a law changes like this, you know, obviously, people hear it in the news, they're not looking at what the law actually said. We solve mass confusion whenever, for example, the marijuana amendment passed. You have some people, some, and this is even, even lawyers, some people who say, oh, yeah, marijuana is legal. And you have other lawyers who go, well, it's not legal until the state of Ohio actually formalizes the laws around it. So, anytime the law changes on any subject like that, there's going to be confusion, and it is imperative that we take a few steps to educate people in our community. So I really appreciate you coming out, I don't necessarily agree with the ban, but I do agree that there are some things that we can do as a city.
May I answer to your comments?
Briefly.
Okay.
Briefly.
I'm not trying to be a bad neighbor, I had neighbors before these that did shoot off fireworks. They exploded over their home yard. These were shot off at the corner of the yard, they're shot straight up, but with the air velocity up in the sky, they drifted right over my house.
Yeah, so it sounds like maybe.
And I hate to think that I have to start over after twenty-six years of blood, sweat, and tears, and I'm sixty-nine years old. I hate to think that I have to start over because of terrorism.
Yeah, and it sounds like maybe your neighbors aren't being considered neighbors.
Mr. Blair, you have any comments?
Yes, I do, as a matter of fact, to echo on the back of our city manager, our trip to Belle Fountain today, there's four people here in the room that was there, it was a very informative day, they really rolled out the red carpet for us. We are anxious to work with them, they are planning on coming to the city in July, and I'm sure that Chelsea and it's a good day, and I appreciate the opportunity to see how a community of twenty years ago, very destitute, and low in the world, you have to go to Belle Fountain, I recommend it, it's just exploded the downtown, so, thank you all very much, appreciate everybody that's here.
Thank you. Ms. Paul, do you have anything?
I think I'll just give a plug for the Fayette County Farmers Market, we try to get up there every Saturday that we can. Just a lot of really neat people and a lot of cool things, super kind people, they've always got a tent for different community members. Last time, they had the Health Department out, and they had lots of good information. Our early intervention group will be out there at the end of the month on a Saturday, giving information about the autism training that we do and different services we provide for little ones. But it's just, it's just a neat environment, so I would encourage you, I've talked to a few people recently who have said, I've never been there. So if you've not, definitely go check it out, it's wonderful and run by wonderful people. That's all I've got.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hawk, do you have anything for us tonight?
Well, earlier in the committee meeting, I asked if it would be made of the Joe fireworks, chickens. So, but I want Sylvia to know, I like chickens.
Okay. Not just for Sunday dinner, right, Ted?
But another thing.
That reassures me.
Joe's proclamation that he read to Fulton Terry sounded almost like an obituary, but it was very true. He's done all these things, and he's a really man that lives his faith. He's a really good Christian, I like him. He's, he's done a lot for this community, and, and I thank you, Joe, for doing that and putting that together.
Gail was a lot of help.
I think Fulton's going to be around a long time, after hearing him talk and joking around with everybody. I think he's got a lot of years ahead of him, and probably a lot more good to do for the community, so.
More than likely.
I, I applaud him for the life he's lived, and the example he's set in the community, and the service he's done, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Ted, Gail was a lot of help, and it's particularly helpful so that they, it was a surprise to him tonight. And that, to keep that going, we need a, an indifferent intermediary to ask some questions, otherwise I'd get a little bit suspicious about what we're doing.
Mr. Chrisman, you have anything for us tonight?
Well, I'd like to thank everybody for coming and their interest in the community. And like Caleb said, we did discuss the fireworks thing quite extensively this further this evening. Also, Fulton Terry's a great guy, Joe, did we go with his church one Sunday, the hundredth anniversary or something?
Yes.
And then went over when they had the new church, UPS guy.
Oh.
And, as I recall, I didn't have to go anymore, because I could hear him clear over home.
I was getting ready to say, he's loud.
He is.
He gets carried away.
He gets carried away, but he did a good job, and Fulton has been a big asset to the community, even though he did give me a ticket one time. That's no big deal. I guess that's about all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody for coming.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone for coming, and they're right, Marilyn, we had a big discussion about this, and it's, it's quite a conversation we had about the fireworks. And it is a little complicated, a little bit more complicated than what some of us actually didn't realize, so we're working on a few things. And also, I want to congratulate Fulton Terry and his entire family, I mean, fantastic family, they, they did a lot for this community. And like I think Mr. Hawk said, they will continue probably doing for this community, so I want to congratulate him and his entire family. And so, and then Sean, thank you for the comments about the trail, it's been working on, I know it's been a long drawn out, but we're getting there. We're getting there, and finally, we'll get connected at last. So, that's about it, except for Ted, I got to tell you about something, there's an email been going around, and I'll tell you why. It consists of a can and a, it's got pork processed meat and gelatin, do not open it, it's spam. Can I get an adjournment?
I'll move that we adjourn.
What is, someone, okay, we got, oh, and we are officially adjourned. Oh, a roll call, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's all right, Blair.
I need a roll call, yes.
We need to adjourn, so Blair?
Yes.
You want to? Call?
Sure.
Chrisman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Now Schultz?
Yes.
Now you're ready, okay.
We are officially adjourned. Thank you all.